Good evening, everyone. It's October 30th, 7:00 PM. And this is a meeting of the Sherborn zoning board of appeals. I believe we have a quorum. I see all the members here. Gene, I think first item on the agenda tonight is a modification of a special permit. Is that correct?
It is.
For the fireside.
It is.
Great. And so this is for the change of use of the annexed building from a coffee shop to a flower shop. So I personally think that this is an easy discussion that shouldn't be too controversial, but I'll sort of pick it over to the board and see what they have to say. And if there's any public comment or questions, I guess, from the applicant. To me, it seems like there's not going to be much of a difference in use.
Yeah. Michael just made a point. You need to do a roll call to open.
Oh, I do. Thank you, Michael. Roll call, Mr. Fitch.
Here.
Mr. Labby.
Here.
Great. Mr. Novak.
Mr. Fitch's neighbor is here.
Wonderful. Mr. McBride is here as well. So we have all members of the ZPA present tonight. So going back to the request for modification of the special permit, I don't think that this is controversial from my perspective. We can hear from the applicant board members if you so choose, but I'm going to turn it over to any one of the board first. Mr. Novak.
I agree. It sounds very non-controversial, Mr. Chairman. I just wondered if Tyler Nate could tell us a little bit about what they're going to be doing there and how it changes. Sounds like not much, but I'd love to hear it from them.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for having me. So we're planning on opening up a flower and plant shop in what formerly was known as the cafe. So the cafe was always kind of a temporary thing as the restaurant got up and going. And then I was actually general manager of the tavern when we first opened up. And then throughout this year, I was tasked with figuring out what to do with this space. And after many discussions, a dream of mine has always been to have a flower and plant shop. So it kind of aligned that we could kind of move in that direction. So we will be doing custom arrangements, build your own flower bouquets. We'll be working in partnership with the Fireside Tavern to do some small events and things like that. Holiday arrangements, build your own centerpiece for Thanksgiving. Different, different kind of small events like that. Overall, we're not changing anything structurally. We're not changing anything with the building really at all besides moving out the copy equipment and putting in flowers. So it's going to be pretty simple of a change. We're hoping to change the sign that's out on North Main Street. I have a mock-up of that. If you would like me to share it, it's literally, it's basically the same exact sign. Instead of saying Fireside Cafe, it says Fireside Floral underneath it now. It's the same design. We went to the same, the same company, Signorama, and said, can you just make this look exactly the same, just with a different language floral, or just cafe changing to floral? We will not be doing food. We will not be doing any kind of coffee or anything like that anymore. So it's just going to be pretty simple flower and plant sales. And we're working with a lot of local growers. So we were working with Cloudberry Farm and Vicki Relis. She has started a greenhouse on her property. So a lot of the plants that we have in here are from her greenhouse. So we're trying to stay as local as possible and kind of support the community in that way.
Very much. Mr. Fitch or Mr. Labby, any questions or comments?
Well, well, it sounds like a wonderful idea. I welcome the floral shop coming into that space.
Thank you.
Todd?
No, no questions for me. I mean, it sounds like no, no food, no beverages, nothing is going to be served. It's just going to be floral type products made available. So, all right.
I see Daryl's hand is raised. Daryl?
Yes, hi, Daryl Beardsley. I guess I'm speaking with my Board of Health hat on, but I don't, Board of Health hat on. However, I'm not positive about this. It is a change of use. Officially, the board is supposed to review that for its impact on the septic system. But my gut tells me that the water use associated with this is going to be far less than associated with food service. So on a volume level, which is what we're supposed to look at, I would be very surprised if it's an issue. And I can ask the health agent to just check on that kind of informally and then maybe formally, find out what the formal process is for a change of use. But we do need to at least run the numbers on it.
Okay.
And it's also not.
We'll make it subject to Board of Health approval.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Novak, you're on mute.
Sorry, my bad. When you're ready, I have a motion, sir.
Wonderful. Let's hear it.
See if anybody else has something to say.
Mr. Novak, let's hear your motion, please.
All right. I move that the board grant the requested modification to the existing special permit to remove all food service and sales from the facility and change the use to floral arrangements as set forth in the application, including the change to the signage as Fireside Floral is going to deliver to Ginny Guthrie electronically tonight. So it's in our record and that it be, the use be in compliance with all other regulations of the town, including those of the Board of Health. That's my motion.
My second.
Wonderful. Can we take a vote by roll? So Mr. Fitch?
Aye.
Mr. Labby?
Aye.
Mr. Novak?
Aye.
Mr. McBride is aye. So it passes. The change of use is approved, subject to Board of Health approval as well.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you, Tyler. Good luck.
Good luck to you.
I think next on the list, are we opening, why don't we open 31? If that's what we're doing, or Mr. Haverty, sort of just discuss where we are with that. And then we can move on.
Paul, say for me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Paul, please, please sort of let us know what's, what's new on 31 Hunting.
Sure. So we submitted a letter to the board earlier today in which indicates that our intention is to withdraw the appeal of the board's earlier decision denying the application for 31 Hunting Lane. We will be filing that with the Housing Appeals Committee. First, I will check with Town Council to see if they will agree to do that as a joint motion. And if they're not amenable to that, then we'll file it by motion to withdraw that appeal. And as a result, we are withdrawing our requested modification of that comprehensive permit application as 760 CMR 56.05 subsection 11 subsection C makes provision for it, which states that an applicant can withdraw a modification request at any time.
And this is a point of sort of procedural hygiene. Do I need to open the hearing this evening? Or to protect, you know, the town, I see Rick nodding, or have you officially withdrawn it? Is there another step that has to be taken?
So we have officially withdrawn it. That being said, if you choose to open it and then accept the withdrawal and end the hearing process, I certainly don't have any concerns with that.
I see Rick has his physical hands raised.
Yeah. Zach, I'm thinking exactly the way you are, which is, this is, there's no reason this shouldn't go ahead. But if we open the hearing now, we'll have met our open the hearing deadline. God forbid something goes sideways later. We can always close it later. Mr. Haverty, we thank you for your letter, but if you indulge us in opening the hearing, we'd like to do that.
Certainly, but I, Mr. Novak, I do think that the board, if you're going to open the hearing, should just agree to accept the withdrawal and that's the end of the process. You can close your hearing and that's the end of it.
Yeah, I think I just want the, I think I just want the minutes to reflect that we've opened the hearing for 31 and we have to withdraw and then we'll close the hearing.
No problem.
Rick?
I have a motion for you, sir, if you're ready.
Yes, Rick.
All right. I hereby move that we accept the proposal to withdraw the remanded application for 31 Hunting Lane as set forth in Mr. Haverty's letter of October 30. That's my motion.
Wonderful. I just want to make sure, have we opened the hearing yet is the question. So the motion, I just want to pause that for a second. So I know it was on the agenda. Do we have to, do we have to, do I have to say anything in particular? Do I, Rick, to open it?
I'd like to amend my motion, Mr. Chairman, if you'll, if you'll grant me the leeway. I move that we open the hearing for 31 Hunting Lane and then immediately accept the withdrawal of the application as set forth in Mr. Haverty's letter of October 30th, 2024. That's my amended motion.
Wonderful. I will second that motion and I will now take a vote by roll. So Mr. Fitch?
Aye.
Mr. Labby? Mr. Novak?
Aye.
Mr. McBride, aye. Mr. Labby, did you agree to the motion?
We were dealing with a little bit of booing here in the neighborhood. Sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, Labby, aye.
Great. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Paul, for indulging us and your patience with that. So the hearing for 31 Hunting Lane is closed, correct? Mr. Novak?
I move that we now close the hearing, having accepted the application withdrawal.
Wonderful.
Seconded.
Vote by roll, Mr. Fitch?
Aye.
Mr. Labby?
Labby, aye.
Mr. Novak?
Novak, aye.
Mr. McBride, aye. So I think our procedural hygiene is over on this issue. And I don't know, Michael, if you have a comment on that or if it's something else.
Yeah, I just wanted to check, to make sure that this means that in terms of that project, the Pine Hill residents, that there's nothing before you at all. We don't, as a board, as other committees, don't have to make any comments anymore or reflect on anything. Just wanted to understand what it means.
So what we just closed was 31 Hunting, not 41 North Main.
Okay. Oh, so the one that you were going to open today. Okay.
The new one, the one on Hunting behind, I'm 41.
Okay, fine. I was getting the address confused. Okay, so we no longer have to do anything with that in terms of.
No, we're just focused on the one on Main Street now.
Okay, thank you very much. Just wanted to be clear.
Yep. So I think next on the list is 41. So I'd like to open the hearing, reopen the hearing for 41 North Main Street, 40B comprehensive permit application. And with that, I know that Lynn, I think you submitted an updated, the most recent information is you submitted an updated waiver request. Is that right?
Sure. So since Lynn's suite, for the record, LDS Consulting Group, Wellesley, Massachusetts, thank you, Mr. Chairman, we submitted after the last hearing, a memo, a letter from Jeffrey Dirk with a plan on the intersection addressing the traffic intersection issue that was brought up at the last meeting. So I'd like him to talk about it. We also submitted a response to the historic commission's concerns about the historic home, which is not going to be part of this development. Those buildings will stay. And in addition, we submitted an updated waiver list with some supplemental information with regard to waivers for the Board of Health. So if that's okay, I'd love to turn it over to Jeff so he can give you a few minutes on the information that he proposed and then we can follow your will for the rest of the meeting.
Great. That sounds like a good plan. Thanks, Lynn. Jeff, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, members of the board. For the record, Jeffrey Dirk with Vanessa and Associates. As Lynn had mentioned, we did, I think by way of homework from the last meeting, the board had requested that we look at how the intersection might be redesigned to accommodate the driveway, really to put pen to paper to show that it was feasible so that the board would have something to look at as it relates to the intersection design and the modifications that are required. We also provided some supporting analyses for the intersection to show how it would operate in terms of motorist delays and vehicle queuing with the improvements. So if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to share my screen. There we go. Hopefully everyone can see the concept plan that is there in front of you. So this is the plan that was submitted to the board that shows the modifications to the North Main Street Elliot Street intersection. Before I get into the design, I just, as a reminder from the last hearing, both roadways, they are state numbered routes, but under local jurisdiction, meaning that the town is, has the jurisdiction over this intersection. So to the extent that this becomes a part of the project, we would obtain the approvals from the town to implement the changes that are shown here. So we go through the town process with the Public Works Department to undertake the review of the design and make sure that what we're proposing and what's constructed is consistent with DPW standards. So as it relates to the intersection design that you see before you, as we had spoken about at the last hearing, the proposal now is to have the primary access to the project site to come out and align with Elliot Street essentially. In order to have that driveway be a part of the signalized intersection, the intersection needs to be reconstructed. So what we've shown in the plan here is the reconstruction of the intersection with the installation of a brand new traffic signal as well as sidewalks and crosswalks at the intersection. So it'll be a brand new signalized intersection up to current standards. And I think importantly, as you look at it, there's real enhancements to mobility for pedestrians and bicyclists at the intersection, which is important because we know we have the school off of Elliot Street. So what we're showing here is obviously the ability to cross all of the four corners or the four legs of the intersection by way of push button control. And we'll be able to convey pedestrians on reconstructed sidewalks around the intersection as well as wheelchair ramps and push buttons. So it'll be a fully compliant and mobile intersection. So an improvement in terms of pedestrian mobility and safety at the intersection. I think importantly, from those that use the intersection today, one of the major changes as we add the driveway is we need to make sure that on the north side of the circular island that's there today, two-way traffic has to be conveyed on that side of this traffic circle. So what we've done, as you see in the drawing here, is we've expanded that traffic circle so that we have two-way traffic on the north side of the circle because we have to have it line up with our driveway. So you have to be able to go straight across through our driveway. And if you're coming from the driveway, you need to be able to go straight across to Elliot Street. So if you are traveling south on North Main Street and you're making a left-hand turn, you're going to make a left-hand turn on the north side of the island rather than the south side of the island as you do today. So it's a reconfiguration. That's probably the most prominent change. But as you look at the circle, we preserve the character of the circle in the island and we've expanded the island. So it's going to have much larger green space from the standpoint of a pedestrian, much larger area to stand if you're a pedestrian waiting for the signal to change street and cross the intersection as well. You will, if you're making a right-hand turn on North Main Street northbound to travel to Elliot Street, that will continue to be a free right. There will be a signal at the crossing. So if there's a pedestrian crossing from where the island is over to the south sidewalk on Elliot Street, you will get a red signal indication. That is a new requirement in the Americans with Disability Act. And what it requires is that if you have these slip lanes, they need, at a signalized intersection, they need to be signalized. And that's for the safety of pedestrians, especially mobility impaired pedestrians or pedestrians with limited sight. So the intent there is you do stop traffic. So there will be a red signal indication there provided that if a pedestrian pushes the button, you won't be able to make that free right-hand turn until the light turns green. So we've, this is the design, as I mentioned, reconstructing of the sidewalks when they approach the intersection, crosswalks across all four legs. That's again a requirement of the Disabilities Act that you have that opportunity to cross all four legs of the intersection. Brand new signalized intersection, state-of-the-art signal control, expansion of that circular island, but maintaining the character of the circle with the brick and lay that's there. So that's going to be a part of the plan. From the standpoint of how the intersection operates with our driveway there versus without the driveway there, with this realignment, it really doesn't change the signal phasing much because the Elliot Street movements will go at the same time as the driveway movements. So we don't need to add any additional phases to the traffic signal, which is really what causes additional delay. So because of the fact that we've got this nice alignment now with Elliot Street, we don't have to add an additional signal phase. And our driveway actually has very low volumes based on the revised site plan. So it will operate similar to conditions without the driveway being a part of the intersection. But again, significant enhancements in terms of safety and mobility at the intersection will come to bear as a result of this plan. So that concludes my presentation for this evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm certainly available to answer any questions that you might have now or later on in the evening.
Thank you very much, Jeff. I appreciate that presentation. It looks like an interesting design. And I see hands raised from my, members of my board. So Mr. Fitch, I think I'm seeing, Mr. Novak, point to his neighbor.
Point at me. Okay. My only question is, are you widening Elliot Street there?
Let me just take a quick look at that. It looks like we are doing, so we're widening slightly to the north, but it's within the public right of way. And the width of the widening is about the width of a sidewalk. So it's about a five-foot widening.
Okay. Well, my question there was, if you are widening, are you proposing a taking of property?
Absolutely not. The work will all be done within the right of way. In fact, if there was a reason that we were close and we needed to shift a little bit to the south, we have the ability to be able to do that because we're widening the island there. We can also shift our driveway slightly if we need to. But the intent is all work will be completed within the public right of way or on the applicant's property and that there will be no need for acquisition of private property.
Okay, thank you.
And just to be clear, the applicant's proposing to pay for the cost of this work?
I'm going to defer to the applicant, but what I would, what I would say to the board is that this is the design that has to be there for the driveway to be located at the intersection. It's really not optional. If you want to put, if you want to put a driveway into this intersection, this is, this is the design that's necessary for that to be in place.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. It seems like there's some significant improvements to comply with ADA requirements. And I was just watching some the other day on that requirement in particular with respects to being able to cross all legs and having more pedestrian, more of a pedestrian island space. So, Rick?
Mr. Chair, if I can for you, Mr. Dirk, first of all, thank you very much for this detail. It's what we asked for. Your firm is well-recognized. We don't always agree on everything, but you've been a recognized player in this area and a traffic engineer throughout my career, which is longer than either one of us wants to talk about. So you've probably done this type of project a lot before where there's a private project and because of the new project, there's, has to be changes to or rebuilt up an intersection. And my guess is you've probably done that 50 times? Order of magnitude.
As you said, Mr. Chairman, given, given the longevity, I think that we both have had in this type of work. Yeah, I mean, it's a regular occurrence that this occurs.
I'm going to use the number 50 unless you call me off it.
Yeah, it's well north of that.
Okay, well then, whatever, lots. We'll call it lots. And, and, and you probably have some sense of the, of the cost of these things, which is for this type of intersection, 750, a million, 2 million?
You're in the, you're in the correct range. The north end of that would be about a million dollars, but about 750 to a million is not out of, not out of line here.
Okay, fine. That, that makes sense. So in the, in the 50 or so cases where you've done this, in how many of those, again roughly, did the state or the town pay all of it and the developer none?
So zero.
Yeah, right. That's a rhetorical question. I know they answered that one to zero. And then the question is, what's the fair share? And that, that, that sort of leads to McBride's question.
Correct. Right. There's been, there's been, there are instances where it's fair share that goes into it. There's sometimes matching grants where the applicant will put up the money for the design and then there's a, you know, they apply for Mass Works or a Housing Works grant to support those improvements. But there's, there's always, you know, yeah, for lack of a better, there's always skin in the game.
Right. If, if I may, the last time we went through this, the applicant said if and when this intersection came about, they had no issue paying their fair share. I would go as far to say is that we certainly would, would join in any, any applications for, you know, Mass Works funding and certainly support that. Certainly, there's nothing off the table as far as, as, you know, once, you know, if, if it's going to move forward. So I'm just concerned because at no time has the developer said they're, said they're not going to pay zero. So I'm not sure where that statement came from. Thank you.
If I could jump in, Rick, I think it's more to educate everyone on just everything, not, not to assume that you wouldn't just get the facts out on record for the public. So.
Right. And I do have a precise and 40B-oriented reason for asking this question, which is that this is a key safety feature. And if the, the plan is to come to town meeting and ask town meeting to pay for all or materially all or even a material portion of an entirely private project, I think we ought to know that because it seems to me that, you know, it's town meeting can vote what it wants, but that doesn't tend to be popular in the town's history.
Yeah, I think also we would have to just condition the funding of this.
Right, right. And, and, you know, if there are grants, great. It's always, that's, that's always a good solution. Okay, enough said.
Thank you, Rick. Any questions from the board for Mr. Dirk or the applicant? Any member, any questions from the public for the applicant team? Great. I don't see anything unless I'm missing something. Anyone else? No? Oh, I see Scott's hand is raised on the traffic issue.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have a brief presentation, if I may share my screen. It would just take about five minutes.
Sure.
Am I unable to share? Let's see. It's like I am.
Unbeknownst to me, but.
I think, I think, I think, I think I am. Okay, thank you. So again, my name's, for the record, my name's Scott Horsley. I have been retained by some residents in the area, butters, neighbors to the project. And I've been reviewing both projects, 41 North and 31 Hunting. I understand there's been a recent change, so I will address only 41 North tonight. But I do have a comment letter that I provided, which does address both projects. And I believe you have that on file.
I just, I just, I just want to make sure that we're addressing the traffic presentation.
I'm sorry. No, no, not traffic. I'm sorry.
I just want to close that issue. I think if you just stop caring for a moment and let me just sort of close up the traffic discussion and then we can move on to the other topics that are outstanding. So if there's no more issues or questions with the traffic, I would like to sort of defer to the applicant team as to what sort of they would prefer we address next, if anything, and sort of their position. I want to just readdress, you know, the concerns I voiced. I I wanna just read readdress uh, you know, the concerns I voiced, I believe, last time around. Uh, the fact that we are the issuers of the comprehensive permit, we would like to have the ability to um, you know, hear from uh the relevant boards that are uh more appropriately suited to provide opinions um on some of the waivers and, you know, the water supply and septic. So so with that, I'm going to ask the applicant team what they would request that we discuss next.
Um, that's in entirely up to you as to what other topics you wanna go over this evening. We've responded, um, you know, to the letter that we got or the memo we got from Historic about the buildings. Um, and we responded to what you brought up about traffic. We certainly had submitted documentation last hearing with regard to um various matters with regard to, you know, civil and fire truck turning and site sections that you didn't seem to wanna, you know, cover. So therefore, we haven't brought our, you know, architect along. We certainly have our civil engineer here tonight, Mike Fabiano from uh fa- um High Point Engineering. Um, so um, and and maybe Paul may have a few things he might wanna say. So I'm I'm gonna let him go and um, thank you.
Excellent. Hi, Paul.
Here to respond to any questions or issues that the board may have. I don't have a specific presentation to make.
Okay. Um, board members, um, any preference on what we approach next on this? Um, I know we have Mr. Horsley in the wings and so Mr. Novak.
Yeah, I I'd suggest we hear from Mr. Horsley and get the 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 septic and 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 whatever other issues he has out on the table as well. Obviously, the elephant in the room remains water supply. Um, but maybe we're not gonna talk about that tonight and it's fine.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Horsley, um, you have the floor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll share my slides again here. Are you able to see this slide? Okay, Mr. Chairman? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. So again, I will address uh the forty one main project, although there is obviously some commonality, at least with the prior project that's been discussed. And that's really the first thing that I wanna comment on. In my letter, I mentioned um Mass Environmental Policy Act. There are, from my knowledge of this process, there are two projects which have a relationship. Um, one of those relationships has been a joint water supply. And there is a provision in the Mass Environmental Policy Act that prohibits uh segmenting these projects. Um, I'm not gonna offer a legal opinion and I'm not a lawyer.
Yeah, so Scott, just wanna interrupt for a second. Um, thirty one was was withdrawn this evening.
I understand that. I understand that. However, there there is a water supply here that's been proposed, which in the past has been for both projects, my understanding. And I I believe the intent of the segmentation is exactly such that one project doesn't get pulled off while the other one's permitting. And then the first project comes back. But again, I defer to the experts at MIPA. But I just wanna make the town aware, if they're not already, there is a provision here uh and possible triggers through MIPA. Uh, so if in fact there is any intention or any history, and I think there is history of both projects together, then I think there's some discussion that probably should take place. And again, I defer to others on that. But that's just my first comment, which is in my letter, which is my intent to summarize tonight. Um, second comment is I did review the pump test, which was done on the well and uh near the wetland, which is uh, I believe, west of forty one Maine. And uh that that pump test is showing very significant drawdown next to that wetland. So I believe um that if this test, if pump test is either extended or converted into a drawdown analysis, it's pretty clear to me we are gonna see water level changes in the wetland, which constitutes an alteration, which of course is gonna have to be uh dealt with with the Conservation Commission. There is the reason I mention it here tonight because there is also a MIPA trigger, more than five thousand square feet of alteration of a bordering vegetative wetland, which I would uh based upon my preliminary review of this data. I think there's very good probability that you'll have that at least that much alteration uh such that uh even with just the forty one main project, there may be a MIPA trigger setting the segmentation issue that I just discussed aside. So I think some more analysis of this effects on wetland uh need to be looked at. Um, along with that, I believe the delineation, which was been part of this application, is more than three years old, uh which means it's no longer valid under the Wetland Protection Regulations. So it uh seemed to me to be important to make sure we have a an accurate and current um wetland jurisdiction as part of this proceeding. Uh, if if in fact this water supply is still part of the project, which I believe it is. This is just a picture of the site plan and I've highlighted the septic area. And as I'll get to in a minute, and I'm sure the town, your ZBA is aware that the Sherburne has some health regulations, which are very important protecting water supply and wastewater issues. Um, this system will be more of just based upon the site plan I'm looking at, will be more than two thousand gallons per day. That triggers a number of um provisions in the local regulations, which are important, public health issues, um including offsite, both onsite and offsite impacts. Um, the applicant will need to determine groundwater flow directions, um hydrogeology of the site, groundwater mounding, uh et cetera. And there's there's more detail in the Sherburne Health Regulations. I'm simply showing four arrows here because the groundwater mounding on this project is clearly going to create flow direction radially from the site, but that's the information that is required by the town and clearly would be needed to do any kind of an evaluation of this project. It is a significant sized septic system. Uh, there's not only, there are some private wells in the area. There's also a stream and some wetlands uh that appear to be down gradient of the site. And according to the Sherburne Health Regulations, those water quality impacts would also need to be evaluated. Um, this is just a simple slide showing groundwater mounding. Um, this will occur on both the septic systems and stormwater infiltration. So I think it's important that when the applicant does do the do the hydrogeologic analysis, they look at the cumulative effects uh of both the wastewater and the stormwater, because the site also includes stormwater infiltration uh based upon the proximity of these features on the site. My preliminary view, there's highly likely to be what we call interference between these two facilities, meaning cumulative impacts of um groundwater mounding, and that will also affect the groundwater flow direction. Uh, this is just a provision from Title V, which also denotes the requirement for a groundwater mounding analysis for more than two thousand gallons per day. So it's not only in the local regulations, but it is in the state regulations as well. Uh, and I should also mention the this this town regulations on water quality impacts do directly reference Mass T E P uh guidelines for nitrogen loading, which is one of the provisions. Uh, this is a nitrogen sensitive area in the is private wells and onsite septic. So under state law and local, local regulations, that's considered a nitrogen sensitive area. So a nitrogen loading analysis will need to be performed to determine those impacts. And then just finally, just some quick thoughts, recommendations. Um, and again, these come right out of the local regulations and are certainly inferred in parts of the state regs as well. We're gonna need water table map, groundwater flow directions uh to determine which way things are going. A nitrogen loading analysis that I already mentioned, updated wetlands delineation. I don't believe the streams were put on that delineation, the plan that I saw. Those are wetland resource areas. Uh, both state and local regulations require all resource areas, not just the closest one. So there are streams and tributaries that I think need to be added to the plan. And then according to the local regs, uh impacts on those streams need to be assessed for both nitrogen and phosphorus. I've already made my comments on the possibility of a MIPA trigger here. Um, we need a little more information on the uh on the well performance to determine that. And obviously, an updated current wetland delineation. Uh, and then finally, uh conduct groundwater mounding analysis, cumulative impacts between both these stormwater and wastewater. And as I already mentioned, uh, the shirt, the last point being the Sherburne Health Regulations requiring an environmental health impact report. So I will stop sharing then, Mr. Chairman, unless you have any questions. I can go back to a slide.
Can you go back to the first chart you put up?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, thanks.
Oh, my, my fault, sorry. Uh, let's see.
That was a wetlands impact.
Yeah, let me just get back there. Oh, the drawdown and this pump test?
Drawdown. So this is gonna sound, this is, this is my very uneducated and simple concerned feeling. I mean, is this like putting a straw on the wetlands and like, is there too much hydraulic connectivity for me to feel comfortable here? Like, how is there wetlands drawdown on a deep well? I just, can you explain that to me if there's not some sort of direct hydraulic connection? Because it seems to me that if you're drinking, if you're getting water from a surface wetland, that's that's not a good situation.
Yeah, great, great question. I'll make sure to include a clearer graphic on this for my next submittal. But uh the bed bedrock wells receive their water from the overlying superficial or shallow soil, shall we call them? The groundwater in the shallow areas. So as you pump a bedrock well, uh the surf superficial, uh the more shallow water table uh is also affected. There's a timing factor between when the pumping begins and when you see those effects. Um, one of my things I noticed about these pump tests, it looks like they've run for about a hundred minutes, a little more than that. Um, that would not be enough time to see these effects in many cases. But uh to to your point, there's a direct connection between the overlying shallow waters that make up the wetland and then the bedrock well, fractured rock. Uh, the fractured rock wells get their water from the overlying groundwater, which is in this case is the wetland.
Did you measure? Did did somebody measure the wetland impact or the wetland from from these tests? Or are you like, was there an actual measurement of a reduction in the height of the water level on the surface wetland? Or is this is this a model?
Yeah, I don't believe that has been done. Um, but the two ways to do it, one is to, uh, as you suggest, or you indicate, run a model. Uh, you can draw a drawdown test, which is pretty standard, looking at various pumping rates for various duration. Some of that data from this pump test would be very helpful in doing that. The other way is to do an actual um longer term pump test with an observation in the in the wetland, which certainly would be a good idea. Um, you'd wanna run the pump tests uh significantly longer than what we're seeing here. But this is something that's pretty commonly done. A five day pump test is one, is a common pump test. So it could be done either way, Mr. Chairman, either or both ways, ideally both ways, a model, predictive model, and then actual monitoring in the field.
So I guess, I guess, I'm just confused. So in terms of the test that has occurred and the opinion that you are rendering uh are providing to us tonight, was there, do you have a conclusion that there was in fact surface water impact?
I do not have any measurements in the wetland. I'm opining that, given the drawdowns we're seeing here, which were on the order of uh tens of feet in the bedrock well itself.
This is inside the cake, inside the casing itself.
Yes, yes. And looking at the orientation of those wells to the wetland, which is very close. I don't remember the exact number of feet, but well within the hundred foot buffer. Um, I think there's a high probability that we will see hydrologic, what we call in the wetlands world, alterations to that wetland. And those are gonna need to be evaluated. And um like I said, that can be done either with a model, as you as you indicated in your question, or a field test.
Thank you very much for clarifying. Uh, Mr. Lesser, I'm gonna see your hand is raised unless my board members wanna jump in and ask any questions. Michael?
Uh, Michael Lesser, co-chair of the Sherburne Conservation Commission. Uh, when they did the first initial testing, we did have them do a little bit of monitoring of the wetlands. The test was, it was not conclusive. We didn't see any, it was a short test. So therefore, the results, they showed at some time in one place, showed maybe there was a little reduction. But given rainfall and other kind of issues, it was, it was hard to discern anything decisive from that, given that the limited time of the actual uh test. But um, so it's something we would do as part of a uh a conditioning of a uh of testing the wells significantly, um so that we would have that kind of monitoring going on. Uh, so we don't have anything, we don't have anything to say. Yeah, there was basically no easy evidence, but there was nothing. It was a very short test.
Yeah. Um, in terms of, Michael, a notice of intent would be required to continue to test these existing wells. Is that right, in your opinion?
Yes.
And uh in terms of what would be required to uh make that testing happen, are we talking, you know, what 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 can you sort of, without binding yourself, sort of, I would say contemplate, right? So is this a discharge of the water outside of the wetland? Is this sort of like, is this like, what what sort of, you know, items would you think you might require to test a well that happens to be in a in a in a resource area or a buffer zone?
It would be, yes. A major thing would be where the water goes uh from the pump test. And so there'll be a significant amount of water and the appropriate ske- setting up of what kind of monitoring will do for any hydrologic impacts, uh which obviously could overlap with the fact of what happens with neighboring wells. Uh, so it would have to be appreciated. I would assume there'd be some coordination of that. Um, and but yes, we'd have to, the major issues will be that, that's separate from a notice of intent related, if they're gonna do the uh the water line through the wetlands, there would have to be a.
Right, a water line through the wetlands, obviously. But in terms of the testing, as long as. A water line that is two hundred feet long would somehow, you know, outside of the buffer zone uh would would get them in theory, you know, in compliance or something like with minimal, obviously, soil disturbances, things of that nature. I'm not trying to prescribe your prescribe the order of conditions. I'm just trying to, you know, understand sort of what we might be asking uh of the applicant here, because I, you know, my inclination is to require more testing. But I'm just trying to understand what burden we might be asking them to undertake.
And can we speak at this point? Uh, cause a lot, a lot of issues have been have been brought up by Mr. Horsley.
Uh, yes, if I could just get Lenner or Lesser, if he has a short answer, and then when I will definitely uh defer to you.
No, I would say that, right. The major issues for just the testing itself, not the water line, are the where the water goes so that you don't create erosion issues and then monitoring what what the impacts are on the wetlands.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
Sure. So so thank you. Um, so Mr. Horsley brings up a a lot of the issues. I think that, you know, the main issue here is, um, well, you know, there's a couple matters that he that he brought up. And then I think Paul is gonna kinda talk a little bit about the the legal issues. But you know, for from, but you know, the tech technical issues, um, the other project has essentially been withdrawn instead. Um, this decision has actually been coming for a very, very long time. Um, and so that is, you know, they're 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 they can't be tied together, you know, any anymore. Um, you know, with regard to MIPA and with regard to drawdown, again, I'm I'm not an expert. But the concept of drawdown is whether it in in MIPA is whether it's a permanent drawdown. Um, typically, when well pumping is done and and there was, there was um eight hours of pumping done uh where your your statute only requires for, it's it's a temporary drawdown in the in the wetland. So so that would be something, you know, down, again, down the road, that is 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 gonna have to be. Um, all of that testing is gonna have to be done, you know, if and when the developer applies to D E P for a a public water supply. Um, that testing is not inexpensive. And um I think, you know, the developer's point of view on this particular subject has been that they will do whatever testing is required of them, you know, at at the time, you know, that it's that it's required. I apologize, Zoe has joined the meeting again. Um, and um, you know, with regard to the order of conditions, we stated at the last hearing that, you know, we do recognize the order of conditions has expired. Um, that is gonna have to be applied for. So, you know, kind of in, in, you know, in a nutshell, a lot of these issues that are being raised, again, are issues that at this particular point in time, either 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 don't apply today or or really don't apply at all. So I'm just gonna let Paul speak to the 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 legal legal part of all of this, rather than sort of the engineering and practicality. The, the, the legal, legal part of all of this, rather than sort of the engineering and practicality of it.
That sounds good, thanks, Lynn, and Paul.
Mr. Chair, um, again, we, we sort of went over this at the last meeting, but I think it, it, a rehash would be helpful. Um, I, I took a look at the Board of Health Well Regulations. The only provision in there that I see that addresses. Uh, well, tests and pumping is for a four hour constant pumping period, and it has to show two gallons per minute for four hours. The testing that we did was an eight hour test, it showed the minimum, um, two gallons per minute that is required. There's no local rule or requirement that would justify requiring the applicant to undergo the expensive testing. Um, of a multi-day pump test as being requested by Mr. Horsley. Um, now that may be something that will have to be done as part of the. Uh, permit from DEP for the public water supply, but again, that's a later in the, the. Team, um, process, in the way chapter forty B is designed, we're only supposed to submit preliminary plans. Um, we're not required to. Demonstrate full compliance with other state and federal regulations at the time of the, the local hearing. When the, the boards can, can issue a decision that's conditioned. Upon compliance with those other issues, I know that, um, Board Member Novak has previously cited. Um, the. The case in which there was a Board of Appeals decision overturned based upon local, um, well concerns. But that, that involved a, a request for a waiver under local requirements, there was a specific provision. In the local Board of Health requirements that was required to be waived, that was not addressed as part of the local hearing process. That's not the issue here, there's no specif- specific local regulation. Addressing the length of, of a pump test that we are, are seeking relief from. Um, general law, chapter forty B, section twenty prohibits a board from subjecting. Uh, a comprehensive permit application from unequal treatment, you cannot treat. Unsubsidized housing differently than you treat subsidized housing. Um, so if it's not something that is required of unsubsid- of a unsubsidized housing development, you can't require it. Of a subsidized housing development, so at the end of the day, again, I, this may ultimately be a test that gets completed. As part of the ongoing state permitting process. But it's just not something that we feel is justified to be provided as part of this local hearing process. We're complying with your local rules and requirements as it relates to this testing, and the board doesn't have. The, the authority to require anything greater.
Thank you, Paul, uh, just to clarify one of the things you said, you said two gallons. Uh, I'd say two gallons per minute, is that bas- that's based on the depth of the well, right, and then is that, what section of the Board of Health regs are you referencing?
It's in section twelve under tests.
Is that for a domestic, that's just for domestic water supply, right, that's the section heading?
It's, it's domestic or semi-public. Which, I. I mean, I, to, to me, this is a public water supply, I don't know exactly what a semi-public water supply is. But just from reading the definition, it seems like it would be applicable.
Board members, any thoughts or comments as I'm. Re-antiquating myself with, uh. The regulations I once, I once knew much better than I do now. Rick?
Um, the, with respect to all, everything Mr. Heaverty said. Um, I think you're asking us to waive a local Board of Health requirement for an environmental impact statement. And. Lack of water supply or impact on the neighbor's wells would be there, so it seems to me you're. On the banana peel of asking us to waive something that's squarely within this subject matter. Maybe I missed it.
I, I would respectfully disagree with that. It's a separate provision, there, there's no provision within the environmental impact study. That talks about conducting a multi-day well test.
We hear each other.
Uh, board members, any other comments or concerns on? This. Topic?
I do also wanna add, because I think Mr. Horsley hit on, on stormwater, you, you have a full.
I think we're just gonna pause on that for one.
Oh, okay, I just didn't, there were so many things thrown in there.
Sort of go through the septic issue first, if you don't mind, Lynn, and then.
Got it.
That's okay. Uh, Daryl, I see your hand is raised. Uh, can you please, uh?
Uh, yes, Daryl Beardsley, I do have a question about the septic. Uh. And whether. There's any schedule yet for when the Board of Health might see. Plans for that system. Now, I'm. I guess that's my first, first part of the question, second is more comments. Roadways are not a good thing to have over a septic system. It makes them vulnerable to, uh, being damaged, and for a system of this size. And its potential impact if it was damaged and not performing properly, that would not be. Uh, a good situation, certainly. Um, and. Haven't looked at it in a couple of years since we were last discussing this particular property. But the testing that had been done historically in the area where this system is being proposed. I have a recollection that the depth to groundwater was quite shallow. And possibly even less than the title five, four feet. And so that's part of my interest in seeing some sort of septic plan, so we could make more reasonable comments. Practical comments. About this proposal.
Thank you, Daryl. Uh, applicant team, any response to our questions about? Septic plans? No? Mr. Novak, any other board members, any other comments here on septic? Uh, I guess we're not going to get anything from the applicant team on that, um, so I think the answer is no, we're not gonna, we're not gonna submit anything anytime soon, um. Rick?
Well, I, I, I guess I have a process question, Mr. Chairman, and maybe I've lost the thread. Um. The last time when it became clear that, that we in the applicant team didn't see eye to eye on. Whether they were gonna provide anything on wells, it looked like the entire process might take a, uh. People in my business call a fast off-ramp. Um, uh, because that was going to be a big problem, and, and maybe, maybe the project isn't going that way, and I'd be, I'd be glad to have things fully looked at, but. Are we going to have a, a, a peer reviewer look at their septic? System and, and tell us what we should be asking? Um. I mean, they haven't given us much information, but I'm. Sure, a peer reviewer would notice things like the well of the restaurant next door, being right next to it, and. Maybe that works, maybe it doesn't, I'm not enough of a civil engineer to know.
Uh, yeah, you know, it's a good question, Rick, I, you know, also felt like we were sort of headed for a fast off-ramp, I did wanna give the applicant team. Uh, deference to, you know, share what they had submitted, and then obviously, Mr. Horsley had something to, to contribute, so. I think, you know, sort of pausing on the substance of sort of what we've been discussing, maybe I will turn it up to the, to the. Board real quick to sort of see what their pulse is on. Whether they wanna continue to, you know. Ask the applicant to spend money on a peer reviewer, um, if they're not gonna submit more. Information on well and septic, um. And what your feelings are on sort of where we are, uh, here, so I'm gonna turn it over to. Uh, Mr. Fitch first, see what his thoughts are and how, you know, he thinks we should, how much deeper we think we, how much deeper he thinks we should probe. Uh, and request.
Do you want us to respond to what we've submitted on, on septic and why?
Um.
Before you take, before you take.
If you're gonna, I just, Darrell just asked you, and I just asked you if you're gonna submit anything, so I just, yeah, if you wanna.
We didn't even have a chance to answer, so, so since the last meeting, we also did submit all of, um, the soil testing that has been done on the property. And we have located the septic system on the plans. The reality is that if and when a comprehensive permit does issue, and if and when the developer. It chooses to go ahead and develop this property. The property is going to, again, go in front of the Board of Health for a title five permit. So, so that is, that is a part of the process, just like going in front of the Concom. To do, you know, whatever testing needs to be done for a DEP for the water. So, that, there, there is information that we have submitted. Um, since the last hearing, uh, that, um. You, you know, I, it shows, you know, the general information that we have at this point in time. But everything we one hundred percent admit is conceptual, and quite frankly, it's a, it's at the developer's risk that if. Push comes to shove, when we gotta, you know, do something, they, you know, they need to get more up-to-date details on everything.
Understood, uh, I duly noted, though, I, I, I understand, um, I think. You know, it's been, it's a bit unorthodox for this board, uh, to make a decision, uh, based on the absence of seeing a septic plan. Um, and additional information, so with that, I'm gonna turn it back over to the board. Uh, members, and to sort of see where you're feeling, uh, based on Rick's question. About whether we should continue to probe if we do not have septic plans, and do you feel that that is necessary? To comfortably issue a comprehensive permit, so. Um. Jonathan?
Well, yes, I am concerned that we have not gotten a septic plan, and I'm also concerned that the, uh. The water issue has not been updated since the last hearing, we, we raised this issue early with this applicant. And they indicated that they did not intend to submit further information on the availability of water. And that's. Their choice. But. We have to act on what we have. And. And they're, they're, they've made a decision that. We're not gonna get information that we asked for.
Uh, Todd, what are your? Thoughts, I see you nodding, uh, anything sort of add other than general endorsement of Jonathan?
Um. Just, just a, a, a thought that's in my mind is, I'm not sure how one could waive. Local regulations pertaining to health and human safety when sufficient information is not presented, that. Such health and human safety matters are gonna be sufficiently addressed and protected. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to round that matter. I'm not quite sure how we get there. With regards to waivers.
That's, that's similar concern, uh, for me as well, to issue waivers, uh, without having the information, so, uh, Mr. Novak.
Yeah, um, I'm, I'm more aligned with Mr. Fitch than, than, than probably anybody else, I mean, this. This sounds like a play you see a lot, a lot of ZBAs where. Often less experienced forty B developers come in and say, just give me my permit first, and then I'll come back later with details about. Things like wells and septic systems and everything that's actually important. And, and this board has never gone along with that, this board has, has tried to do its job and say. You know, show us there's water, show us there's sewer, cause those are the big issues in Sherbrooke, and show us the other things, but those are really the gating factor. Uh, this applicant. W- with respect. We've been waiting four years for a, a, a water test that somebody could verify and. And, and, and that passed muster with, with outside experts, and we haven't gotten it, and some of those years have been really, really, really wet. We're in a drought right now, but, you know, earlier this year, we were plus eight, nine inches, and. To me. That is extremely probative. Um, the fact that there hasn't been any movement towards, sort of demonstrating water in, in a part of town where water is the issue. Um, so. To the extent that. Um, we have to take an earlier off-off-ramp here, I, I. I'd suggest that we, you know, ask for a further remand, and that that remand direct. The applicant to conduct these tests and give us the data we need to make a reasonable decision. And, and if, if Hack's position is they're gonna issue a permit with us having no information, then that's gonna be Hack's responsibility.
Procedurally, Rick, uh, how do, you know, how do we? If, if, if that were to be the path that we would go, was to be, you know, an easy offer, are, are you making, would that be a motion, um?
Oh, yeah, I mean.
Are we closing, are we, are we moving to closing hearing? Are we, like, what, what procedurally, uh, are we, are we suggesting that we do here, just, just so I know? Not that we're doing that, I just, I wanna hear what your opinion is.
Right, if, 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 fair question, and, and you've just jumped about ten steps ahead on me, um, uh, you were asking for the sense of the board, and, and my, and, and my sense is. If that's where we're going to wind up, that's where we're going to wind up, it's not. Um. Obvious to me that we're gonna be there, if the applicant has more material they want to provide to us, I think we should be open-minded, I think we should hear them. Um. But to the extent that they don't give us any detail on how their septic system works, or how their wells work. It's gonna be. It, it, it's gonna be a tough sell, but we should, but we should listen to them, they might have some very persuasive thing to say, if they wanna say them.
Yeah, I, I agree, I mean, I have to say, my gut reaction to the, to the traffic plan was it's a positive, it would be a benefit to the town, I think it's a net, net improvement. Um, to the infrastructure there, and so I think, you know. I just, you know, I, I, I don't wanna waste everyone's time, and so that's what I wanna be cognizant of as well, you know, obviously, Paul's. Paul and Lynn cost money, and so I just, I don't wanna be unfair to the applicant, I wanna be transparent about where it's sort of, we're all feeling here, so. Um. That's, that's my perspective, um, if, Lynn, if you have other information, um, you would like to share with us this evening, um. We're obviously happy to hear it, um, but if there's no new information, we'll probably close the hearings soon. I think, is where we're at, is that right, board members?
Yes. I just wanted to clarify, y- yes, Lynn and I do cost money, as do the other. Experts that my client is bringing to this meeting tonight, he's got his civil engineer, he's got his traffic engineer here tonight. Um, but it also costs money to de- design septic plans, it costs money to conduct. Um, the, the well tests, um, that the board is looking for. It costs money to go through the process with the Conservation Commission that would be required to actually be able to conduct those well tests. And the amount of money we're talking about for those things is significantly more than the cost of Lynn and I coming back, uh, for another hearing. Um, so. W- we're happy to have the board continue the hearing, we can go back and see what, if, any additional information that we can provide to you. I think it would be helpful if the board could provide some guidance in terms of the septic information as to exactly what it's looking for. Um, because I think that there may be an ability to do something less than a full septic design. Um, if there is specific information that the board is looking for, we can, you know, take a look at providing that. Um, but if, if the board's looking for a full septic design prior to. The point where we would be filing with the Board of Health, then, you know, we don't believe that that's reasonable, and we probably won't be providing it. So it's, it's really a question of whether or not the board, you know, wants to provide us the guidance. Um, and then we'll take a look and determine whether or not we can provide the additional information.
I, I think that's fair, and, and I have not looked at the list of updated waivers that was submitted, uh, yet, so, uh, I will have to do that. Um, and provide feedback, which I think we can do, um. Outside of the next meeting, so we can expedite the feedback, possibly send a letter, if that's possible. In terms of, uh, we can work, uh. An email to address any waivers that are being, that are related to, uh. Uh, septic and water supply, does that make sense, board members? Um, I see, uh, Mr. Trainer Scan is raising his, or, and then another, uh, Mister. I'm, I'm gonna botch name, Mr. Bo- Bo Chichio, uh, so we'll, we'll go to, uh, Tom first, and then, um. Next individual.
Thank, thank you very much, uh, Zach Tom Trainer ninety-seven Washington Street, I'm also Chair of the Groundwater Protection Committee. And we've sent, uh, your, uh, board some, uh. Comment letter on, on this, and, and I wanted to bring up a, uh, I think a timely question. Re- regarding, uh, this dilemma right here, uh, your board has. Uh, thinking about the septic, uh, very simple question for, for the applicant, or, or maybe the board. And, uh, if you'll bear with me, a little math, uh. And, and, uh, comments on title five, and I'm, I'm not a regulator, I'm a chemist. So if I make a mistake at anything, please let me know. But uh we don't have a septic uh, you know, application for the Board of Health, the detailed one. But uh, you know, again, what little I know about the regulations in a nitrogen sensitive area as Sherbrooke is. And by the way, uh, our, our committee is finding our downtown is, is really struggling in terms of water quality and uh and septic uh density effects. But by Title V in a nitrogen sensitive area, I thought the septic loading flow was limited to four hundred and forty gallons per day per acre. And we're, we're looking at six or seven acres here. That's a little over three thousand gallons. Uh, and I believe the uh bedroom count for, for this uh development is at fifty-six bedrooms. If I multiply that by the Title V, a hundred and ten gallons per bedroom, I'm up to over six thousand gallons of flow. So how, how would the Board of Health approve uh six thousand gallons of flow for a land area that with, with, with Title V limits of uh uh something in the three thousand gallon range?
Thank you, Tom. Um applicant team, I don't know if you heard Tom's question around the, the flow. Going to respond to that, Lynn or Paul or Mike, I guess, I don't know who, I don't know who in the applicant team I should be asking here, but uh.
Mike, can you field that question?
I can, I can speak up. Um, board, this is Mike Fabiano from High Point Engineering. Uh, new civil engineers of record uh for the project. We were not involved with the original application from many years ago. So some of the information that's, you know, been talked about, we weren't party to regarding uh the septic system on forty-one North Main Street. It is preliminary in nature. Uh, I agree with most of what's been discussed tonight, that these are things that are going to have to be brought in front of the Board of Health. Uh, the septic system uh will be under scrutiny for, you know, from what Mr. Trainer is speaking to. Um, that will be something that will have to be worked on. I can't speak to any definitive nature of design at this point. Um, I agree about, you know, from a best practice standpoint, it's, it's maybe not a best practice to have a, a paved way over septic systems. We've done it many times in the past. Um, the system does meet, you know, Title V setback criteria. If there are groundwater mounting issues, that's something that we're going to have to deal with from a design standpoint. If there is a nitrogen loading criteria challenge with the site, that is something that we're going to have to deal with. Uh, and it's something that's going to be brought in front of the Board of Health at that time. Uh, but at this time, that plan that you see and the septic system as designed is, you know, slightly beyond a conceptual design. You know, I wouldn't even say that it's past a, you know, a heavy schematic design level. And we believe it was appropriate for the intent and the um, the layout for the project at hands. But like Lynn has mentions and Paul has mentioned, um, from our standpoint, the uh, the design, the definitive design is yet to be completed. Uh, but we fully anticipate to work within the guidelines based on Title V and normal engineering best practices to uh to bring a design forward that works.
Great, thank you. Uh, Mike, that's, thank you for your response. Um, Mr. Uh Bo Chicho, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name. I saw your hand was raised before, so if you want to sort of comment.
Yeah, hi Zach, it's Paul Bo Kiko, forty-one Hunting Lane. Um, it's really a point of information. I don't know if this i- is addressed to the, the board or to Mr. Haverty. But I know I'm talking about, you know, whether the applicant has to supply more information on water or septic. I was thinking about the uh order of remand from HAC. And I, I wanted to ask what the order meant when it talks about the scope of the hearing. The first two items in the scope are wastewater treatment and water supply. Does that imply or is that require a deep dive into these issues? Or what does that really mean when HAC lists that as in the scope of the hearing?
That's a good question. Um, I actually don't have an answer to that. I'm sure Paul uh does, and I'm sure Mr. Novak has an opinion as well, as well as some of their legal minds that are greater than mine on this meeting. So Paul, I don't know if you have a response to that, if you want to start.
Yeah, certainly. Um, I, I would interpret the language in the remand order to allow the board to conduct a review of wastewater treatments to the extent that it has such authority. Um, basically, you have the rights to review the wastewater treatments, the same that you would as if we had initially um proposed handling wastewater in this manner. So, but it doesn't give you um authority to examine it at a level beyond what the board is allowed to do.
Thank you, Paul. Rick?
I, I, as, as is often the case, I agree in part and disagree in part with uh Mr. Haverty. Um, uh surely the fact that the HAC listed those precise things is important and instructive. I think it was saying to the board, please don't screw around with telling us you don't like the colors on the shutters. I think it was telling the um applicant, please don't screw around with pretending the board can't ask you about water and sewer. That's their job. Now, I'm not HAC, so I'm reading into it, but I, I, I strongly disagree with Mr. Haverty on the scope of our allowed investigation. Particularly where HAC directed those subject matter items. So I'll sit down, having said my piece. I know he disagrees. It's okay.
Not the first time.
And not the last. Thank you, Paul.
Most likely not.
No, I will put money on that. Uh, Daryl, I see your hand is raised.
So uh I had my hand raised before, bring up some of the things um uh Trainer very nicely brought up. Uh, certainly one concern about the the, the starting point uh for the septic. But what I want to ask now is if the ZBA would like the Board of Health try to come up with some kind of uh shortlist of issues around septic that would be priority for us. We do have a standard template for deficiencies of plans. But basically, right now, we could hand the entire list to you practically um in terms of what a normal review would be. So that may not be so helpful to you. Uh, but we can certainly pull together kind of the key points and uh data from our files um and some kind of.
Yeah, I think, I think that if there's um if there are waivers relative to water supply or septic, and you could provide us with, you know, one or two uh bullet points of information that, you know, might be helpful in a uh, you know, sort of litmus, you know, sort of litmus test of whether this is going to fly. That would be very helpful. I don't know if that makes sense, but that seems to be probably the most efficient path forward. Uh, what do the board members feel about that? Uh, Mr. Labby?
Yeah, uh, Daryl, I think that's uh, we, I appreciate that offer. I, I think if we could get you to, to distill that down to some of the more salient higher risk points, that would allow us to be more informed. Particularly with regards to specific local regulations that a waiver is being sought for. Um, I, I think that would allow us to be um informed, not more informed, because I don't feel informed at this point, but informed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd let the waivers, I'd let the waiver list thrive. Um sort of just give us a little bit of color on each of those, and that would be helpful, but that's, that's my perspective. Rick, you seem to be nodding, but uh great. And uh animated nodding from Rick and John, and just want to check in with you and see what you're feeling on that.
I agree with what Todd just said.
Great. Daryl, if you could um just uh put that together as, as soon as you could. Obviously, the waiver list is public. Um, and just send it via email. We'll try to just, we'll try to get ahead of the next meeting um so that we can be more productive than waiting for the next meeting to deliver the information or requests.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Horse, I see your hand is raised.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just wanted to say, my understanding of the 40B process is you sit um administering uh other local regulations. So in effect, uh you serve as the Board of Health and administering the health regulation, local health regulations, unless they're waived, and that's your decision too. Um, it strikes me that the public health issues like drinking water and wastewater are things that should not be waived. And certainly could override, um, you know, a decision by uh HAC or others, because they are serious public health things. So it strikes me that the applicant needs to submit enough information to satisfy the local health regulations, which are very well thought out. I mentioned several of these items in my letter and my presentation tonight. We don't, whi- which direction is the groundwater flowing? What's the depth of groundwater? What's the groundwater mounting going to do? All of this leads to, can this project actually have a viable water supply and wastewater system? It strikes me that would be in everybody's interest here. I think there's some serious questions as to whether that can be achieved. Um, and without the information, I think we're kind of flying blind. But I, my, again, my impression is that your board, Mr. Chairman, um i- is, you know, Rick runs the health regulations until unless they're waived, and I can't imagine they'd be waived. So I'm, I guess I'm kind of perplexed by that, because the health regulations are very well thought out. There's no doubt this is a nitrogen sensitive area, private wells and septics. Uh, this, the town has spent a lot of time documenting these problems is, that's why they have the regulations. So I'll leave it there.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that uh opinion, and I, I generally agree. I think there, Mr. Haverty would suggest there is a procedural bifurcation of decisions. Uh, and so that we would be able to make a certain decision now and that, that we'd have to defer uh, you know, other decisions on a lot of the points that you're raising, which are very material and important points uh to the Board of Health's subsequent review. I think, you know, the issue is we're being asked to provide waivers uh in an absence of information. I think we're not necessarily granting the Title V permit, but we are being asked to provide the waivers. And I think in the absence of information, um, I, I, I'm not inclined to grant waivers without enough information. I don't know what enough is yet. Um, it's a feeling, and that's, that's dangerous for a lawyer to have a feeling, because it's rare. Um, but that's my feeling. So um, that, that's sort of where, where I am at the moment. Um and I think it's, it's, you know, uh, that, that's, and unless anyone disagrees, that's, that's how I feel. Seeing general nodding from the board, so I'll, I'll take that uh as a yes. So um, with that, I think we have a couple of to-dos. One is to sort of get some input from the Board of Health on the specific waivers related to uh septic uh and water supply. Um, is there anything else we need to sort of address? Or have the applicant team address um before we continue? Does the applicant team have anything else they'd like to share this evening? Mr. Novak?
I, 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 I think we've said it several times, but it probably can't be clear enough in the record. Um, Mr. Haverty, applicant team, the answer on additional well information is what's on the table is what we're giving you, and that's it. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. That information complies with your local Board of Health requirements and requiring additional information is not allowed under chapter forty B.
Thank you for the editorial I add.
Thank you. And you would, but you would entertain some additional inputs that you would provide for the septic, depending on.
Yes. Correct.
Okay. So Daryl, just to clarify, our ask of the Board of Health is to focus on waivers related to uh the septic system and not domestic water supply. Mr. Novak?
To the extent that the Board of Health sees um requested waivers relevant to the wells, that's something we should know. If they, if they say, if they say it's fine with them, fine. But if they say, wait, if we were approving this as a, as a well with this pumping level, we'd, we'd want X, Y, and Z. We want to know what that list is.
Yeah, that's, if, yeah, and that's fine if the board uh is willing to put the work in for that, that's fine. I'm just saying from a priority standpoint, um, we'll only be passing along uh their input with respect to the septic system to the applicant team. Okay, so I think uh we might be done for the evening. Uh, it seems like we may have sort of touched on everything we're going to touch on. So unless um Lynn or Paul, you have anything else, Mr. Lebarsky, anything else you want to add this evening? I think I'm going to move to uh postpone uh to um postpone the, postpone the hearing to uh I'm losing my, losing the right word right here.
Continue.
Continue the hearing. Thank you, Todd. Uh, it's another date. So uh with that, is there another date in mind?
Can, can, can you, you keep making these statements and then not allowing us to respond?
Yeah, no, I've asked a couple of times. I don't know if there's a.
So, you know, so I would, the only thing that I would say is that you have um, you know, peer reviewers. Um, there has been a lot of information between the prior hearings and this information, um, you know, provided with you. Um, they, they are the experts that are supposed to be guiding you. We're certainly not looking to, you know, expend a lot of money, but it, it might be helpful to, to check in with them on some of these m- matters that, that you're looking to request at this stage in the process.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I generally agree with you, but I think the, the peer reviewers giving me information on a septic system, or there's no information, isn't going to be helpful. So that's, that's kind of where my thought is, but Mr. Novak, go ahead.
The, the peer reviewer uh suggestion may be a little bit with respect of a red herring. Um, as, as the peer review on water, yes, we do have a lot of test uh reports from the past, and those will be instructive in a new decision. As to peer review of your septic system, the septic system last time was a wastewater treatment plant up the hill on Hunting Lane. So it's not like we have any in- information that. We've got none. Um, so that is what it is.
You, you have soil testing. That's, it's not true. We've get, we get, we submitted a number of different files since the last hearing.
I appreciate that, but it hasn't been peer reviewed.
So I think.
And we're suggesting perhaps you should bring your peer reviewer in to have a discussion about the requests that you're coming up with.
So if the applicant team would, would, you know, like to agree to a peer reviewer to review what, what information we do have around septic uh and domestic water supply, uh or semi-public water supply, whatever it may be, that's fine. Uh, but that's that's your request. We can proceed. Do we, I can't recall. Do we have a peer reviewer? We do have, they've known this on this previously. Is that right or no?
Nobis was, if you'll allow, Mr. Chairman, I'm going from memory, so Paul, you'll correct me if I have it wrong. But I think our generalized peer reviewer was don't think, I think it was someone we can't use no more, because the fellow retired, maybe.
Yeah, the, the prior person retired, but you have quotes from Tetra Tech. And we gave a very substantial deposit for them.
Right, so, so, so we could use Tetra Tech. Um, and, and, and they're good. Um, and Nobis was, I, I believe, if I recall correctly, a specialist brought in for groundwater and water supply issues. Jim Vernon there, if I recall correctly.
So if you'd like to proceed, I have no objection proceeding uh with Tetra Tech. Um I just, I don't know if uh there isn't, I, I thought there was a different uh peer reviewer that you could use, as you're saying we can't, so.
Mr. Bully from Tetra Tech's actually on the line here.
We also had a proposal from Nobis for water.
Applicant team, do you have any objections to using Nobis for water? You do. Lynn, you're on mute. I don't know if you have something to say, but I think the idea would be Tetra Tech for septic and Nobis for water. Is that what I'm hearing?
I'm, I'm not sure that Nobis is going to have any different, you know, opinion than they, than, than they had the last time. You know, at least on water. I think Paul's been sort of pretty clear about what the statute says. And this is a lesser use than what was being proposed. One project's gone away. You know, the project is half the size it was going to be last time. So um you know, uh, what, you know, Nobis's proposal is asking for more testing. Uh, that, that seemed to be what was in the um, the proposal from them. And, and I think we talked a little bit about this at the, at the last hearing, which is that you, you know, 40B hearings are supposed to review information, not ask for additional testing. So if, if it is to review the project in the context of the reduction of size, So if, if it is to review the project in the context of the reduction of size, um, the loss of the, you know, the Hunting Lane uh, project, then we don't have a, we don't have a problem with Nobis coming in and spending a few thousand dollars to do a desktop review. Um, but that did not seem to be the way the peer review proposal was, was, was phrased that we review. Um, you know, as far as Tetra Tech also kind of doing it, I think, you know, a desktop review. Um, you know, I think it's hard. Our engineer is new, Tetra Tech is new. Um, with regard to having them take a quick look at the stormwater and the septic, I think we would just wanna hear um, a little bit more um, around the parameters of what they're looking to do.
Well, you're the one asking for the peer reviewer, so I, you need to tell me, I mean, that's.
You know, Steve, Steve is here, maybe we should, we should, you know, hear, hear from him.
Yeah, in a second, I think, I think we're just a little bit, it's a little, I'm a little confused right now. It seems like you want me to defer to the peer reviewer. Uh, you don't want me to use the peer reviewer that required more testing, because he seemed to think it was inconclusive. So you want me to use a different peer reviewer for the water that might give you a more favorable result? You'd also like me to use.
No, 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 I, we're, we're happy to, we're happy to have Nobis do a desktop review of the reduction of the project.
You'd also like me to retain a peer reviewer with the applicant's money to review soil testing, but not a separate design. So I'm not really sure what the value of any of this exercise is. I mean, I'm happy to kick this can in sixty days if you wanna give me more information, but I, I, this doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense to me in my.
I, I don't think you're inter, I, I think that your interpretation of what I just said is, is, is not correct. We don't have a problem with Nobis reviewing the information that's out there and the reduction of the project. That is not what their proposal said that they submitted to the town.
But I understand that, because they, because they have integrity. So uh, Rick, I'm gonna, your hand is raised, so.
Okay. Lynn, lem, 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 uh, you, what, your statement's confused me too, but maybe see if this uh, uh, sort of, to attempt to pull it together makes some sense to you. Um, we, we can, you, you want us to talk to the peer reviewers a- as a general matter. Um, you have no problem with us talking with Nobis. Um, to the extent that Nobis comes back and says, well, you need to do more testing, you're flagging now that you're not gonna do it. But that doesn't make Nobis bad people, it just means you're not gonna go with what they recommend. Is that kind of a fair statement of? Or did I get to, if I, if I misunderstood, you'd.
So, so Rick, why, why don't I jump in here? I, I mean, I think what makes the most sense, si- since you're going to be going back and doing a little bit of homework and, and getting us uh, exactly what it is you're looking for in terms of information regarding the septic system, it's fair that we do a little bit of homework here. Go over the proposal from Nobis and let you know exactly which provisions therein we have a problem with. So we can do that.
Makes sense to me.
That makes sense to me.
Um, how are we on time, Paul? The ninety days.
So this is. Yeah, one more month? Is this the third meeting we've had?
We opened this, did we open this in September?
It's the third meeting.
It's the third meeting, okay.
We opened it in September.
I think that's right.
Um, so, and next, let's talk about a next meeting date. Um, the week of the uh, eleven seems a little short on time. Uh, but I know we have another meeting on the nineteenth, which is pretty packed. So it's gonna either have to be everyone does a lot of work uh, in two weeks, or we're not gonna be able to sort of do it until the week of Thanksgiving, maybe like mon, maybe, maybe the twenty-sixth. Any input from anyone?
Well, um, I, I don't think it's gonna take too long for us to provide you the feedback with regards to our objections to the Nobis proposal.
Um, Daryl, I see your hand is raised. D- Daryl, I see your hand is raised, um, and you're a key uh, contributor here.
Okay. I was just thinking as listening to this discussion about the peer reviewers. My understanding of peer review is, at least in the past, when we had Nobis work on the fields at Sherborne, it was to look at issues that we didn't have in-house capability. The Board of Health, with the exception of mounding analyses and um, nitrogen loading analyses, we are perfectly comfortable with all aspects of Title V and our regulations, all other aspects. So I'm not seeing much need for that. It's some of the additional issues. And then in terms of our local regulations on water, and again, this would be a public water supply, but we may come up with comments about uh, kind of integrity of the quantity and quality that might be supplied over time that we could provide comments on. But again, nobody else is going to have the same insight into our regulations as the Board of Health. So we're comfortable without peer review for those aspects. We really need it for mounding and nitrogen loading.
Okay, so Daryl, just real quick, do you think you could um, have a response to our request with respect to at least the septic as a priority, and then also for domestic water supply after the fact by, you know, sometime? Maybe next week, end of next week?
Definitely need to the end of next week. We have quite a few moving parts at the Board of Health at the moment. Many other projects besides, many other large projects and complicated ones besides this. So uh, we, we could do our best, and we could always try to do more like bullet points or something, and then stand upon that, depending on your interest.
I, I think if you could, Daryl, if you could commit to giving us some bullet points on the waivers requested by the end of next week, that would be great. I do think, though, that in order for them to respond, we're gonna have to move to the week of the, week of Thanksgiving. Uh, Rick?
Yeah, just a, a friendly correction to, to Daryl. Um, that isn't what a peer reviewer is for. The peer reviewer is not just a infill where there are gaps. That is where they are all, very helpful. But mostly, their job is to review the materials provided by the developer for adequately. They are not, and I'll make this speech for you, Paul, so you don't have to make it. They're not self-propelled vehicles of justice designed to roam around and ask for anything they want on any topic they want. They've got a limited role.
Thank you, Rick. Uh, so I think we should try for the twenty-sixth, unless there's objections.
That's fine. Works for me. November twenty-sixth?
November twenty-sixth.
Um, so I would move to uh, continue this hearing until uh, continue the hearing for forty-one North Main, forty B comprehensive permit to November twenty-sixth at seven P M. Do I have a second?
I second that.
Second, but a discussion question.
That's right.
Do you want to um, move that Tetra Tech be hired as peer reviewer to uh, to um, implement whatever comes out of your discussions, because otherwise, we'll have to hire them next time, there'll be further delay.
Uh, applicant team, would you like us to move forward with that motion? To retain Tetra Tech at this time, to review whatever material they have to review? Would you like us to wait?
Exactly, would you be having Tetra Tech review then? Would it be the traffic?
Probably, traffic, stormwater, sewer, maybe? So, so, yes, the septic such as we have.
Test, I guess, what, what's available, and then whatever additional information that might come out from Daryl, from the board.
Right.
And then.
Right.
Okay, again, uh, my, I guess I didn't explain clearly enough before. I didn't view peer reviewers as going above and beyond. The Board of Health does not have the depth of experience. We understand mounding, we understand nitrogen loading, but that's where we need peer reviewers. Reviewing septic system designs is not a big need for us, to have peer reviewer support. Um, so.
Understood.
But we will still work on our comments about the septic for you.
Thank you, Daryl. I sort of lost focus. Where, where are we with the motions here? So we are moving to retain Tetra Tech uh, to review stormwater, traffic, and what we have available for, for sewer, which is not much. So applicant team, can you give us a sense of whether you'd like us to move forward with that at this time?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we would like you to move forward with that. I mean, obviously, we're gonna wanna see the scope um, before it commences, but yes.
Great. So um, I will second Rick's motion to retain uh, Tetra Tech as a peer reviewer to address uh, at the very least, uh, traffic, um, stormwater and uh, septic. And we will uh, provide uh, more details on the scope of that work to the applicant team for approval. So with that, Jonathan, was your vote?
Yes.
Great. Mr. Labby?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Fitch? Sorry, uh, Mr. Novak.
Mr. Fitch's neighbor, um, I.
I, wonderful, Mr. McBride's eye, so we retain, uh, Mr. Bully, we, uh, we will be in touch. Uh, Jeremy will, will be in touch with you this week. Um, on the motion to continue on the twenty-sixth, I don't know if we received a second to that motion. Did we receive a second? Wonderful. Uh, we will continue this hearing until the twenty-sixth of uh, November at seven P M for the forty-one North Main forty B comprehensive permit. Uh, any other motions?
We just have to vote on that one, sir.
Oh, wonderful. Uh, Mr. Fitch?
Well, uh, I move that we continue this hearing to November twenty-sixth at seven P M on the forty-one North Main Street forty B application.
Great, I think that was, I'll second it. Uh, vote, uh, Mr. Fitch?
Aye.
Mr. Labby?
Aye.
Mr. Novak?
Aye.
Mr. McBride, aye. Uh, wonderful, we'll continue until the twenty-sixth at seven P M, and can I get a motion to adjourn?
I so moved. Second.
Wonderful. Uh, Mr. Fitch?
Aye.
Mr. Labby?
Aye.
Mr. Novak?
Aye.
Wonderful, Mr. McBride, aye. Thank you very much, everyone. Uh, we will see you on the twenty-sixth.